Good morning, everyone. It's a pleasure to see you all this morning as our computers sort themselves out. So welcome back. We're very happy indeed, my co-chair and I, with the progress that we've made so far. You're working very hard, we're very conscious of that, and we're very, very grateful indeed. We've had very, very constructive, insightful and positive discussions, fruitful discussion yesterday morning, I think, in the Committee of the Whole, and then two really excellent, sort of fluid and intelligent discussions in Contact Group. Thank you very much for your commitment, thank you very much for your spirit, and I think that we're well on the way to delivering the mandate of this working group, so we really are grateful. So before we resume our discussion on governance, which is where we got to yesterday in the Committee of the Whole, before we resume that discussion, we're going to hear back from the reports on the deliberations of the Contact Group sessions that took place yesterday afternoon and evening. And so first, we'd like to invite the co-chairs of Contact Group 1 to provide a report on the progress that was made yesterday afternoon. That Contact Group had the mandate to further develop the options within paragraph 2 of the non-paper, including enclosure A and some associated paragraphs. Thank you very much indeed to our co-chairs, Joaquin Salzberg of Argentina and Alisca Revolva of Czechia. And Alisca is going to update us on the work of that Contact Group, so please give the floor to Czechia. Thank you very much.
Co-chair Joaquin Salzberg and I had the pleasure and privilege of facilitating the discussion of the Contact Group on contributions to the fund. The Contact Group worked in the afternoon for a full session, first on a general round of comments on key concepts to further discuss and clarify, and then with a focus on option A. We ran out of time to consider the other options. We note here that a new option, now option D, was proposed by a party, and the group agreed to consider it in their discussion. The spirit in the room was constructive and positive, with clear and pragmatic ideas being discussed. The outcome of the work of the Contact Group was presented to the bureau this morning. My co-chair and I proposed to continue our work and consider the options we did not have time to consider yesterday. Thank you, Mr. Co-chair.
Really good progress made. Next, we'd like to hear from the co-chairs of Contact Group 2, which met yesterday evening with a mandate to further develop the options within paragraph 12, including enclosure D and some associated paragraphs. Thank you very much indeed to our co-chairs, Salima Campanier of Belgium and Nika Nicholas of Antigua and Barbuda, and I'll turn to Antigua and Barbuda to give us a report. Thank you very much.
Together with my co-co-chair Salima Campanier, it was a delight to facilitate the discussion of the second Contact Group on dispersment of the fund. Similarly to the first Contact Group, our group started the evening with a general round of comments on key concepts to further discuss and clarify, and then we turned to some of those key concepts to further tease out the pros and cons of each and what needed to be further discussed. The outcome of the Contact Group was presented to the bureau this morning. The spirit in the room was equally constructive and respectful as it was for our colleagues in Contact Group 1. My co-chair and I proposed to continue our work on some of these concepts. Thank you, Mr. Co-chair.
So it's clear that both sets of co-chairs have made excellent progress, thanks to the support of the Contact Group, so we're very, very grateful. So let's think about the work ahead. We've navigated some very challenging terrain, I think, over the course of actually what has only been two days. I think we're very impressed at the level of preparation and the level of thought that you've given, both to the material in the non-papers but also, of course, to some of the wider ideas that you're bringing to the table. Of course, we're not there yet, and we will have to keep pushing forward some of those very difficult discussions in a pragmatic way. Time, as always, is against us, so we have to keep up our good efforts. So we have one meeting today of the Committee of the Whole, which we're currently in, and we will meet twice later in Contact Groups. We'll say a little more at the end of this meeting of the Committee of the Whole about how we intend to use our time in Contact Group. Our intention is to ensure by the end of the day, by the end of our time together over today, we've considered all of the text of the non-paper that was made available yesterday. So for now, for this session of the Committee of the Whole, we plan to finish the discussion on governance of the multilateral mechanism, that's where we broke off yesterday morning. With the remaining time, we'll address paragraphs 4 through 8 of the non-paper, which we haven't yet looked at. Those paragraphs consider public databases and contributions to the fund. If we manage to hear everyone's views on that, and we hope that we will, we will then move on and look at paragraphs 15 and 16. So we'll start with governance, where we broke off yesterday, then we'll turn to paragraphs 4 through to 8, and then if there's time, we'll look at paragraphs 15 and 16. So a lot to get through. Let's start, let's dive back into the topic of governance, as well as the interface with other processes, that's paragraphs 12 bis through to 14 ter. So yesterday, when we concluded the session, we had a list of parties and others who wanted to take the floor. That list included Norway, India, Uganda, Egypt, Uruguay, Togo, the Republic of Korea, South Africa, and an IPLC microphone. If you'd like to take the floor again, please do raise your hand. If you don't want to take the floor, having reflected overnight, you're under no obligation to. So we heard lots of interventions yesterday on paragraph 14 and the relationship between bilateral measures and the multilateral mechanism. We also heard about paragraph 14 bis and the importance of ensuring that the multilateral mechanism is implemented in a coherent, mutually supportive way and in cooperation with other access and benefit sharing international instruments. So from paragraph 12 bis to 14 ter, are there elements missing? Are there aspects of the text which you cannot support, and if so, why? Please remember to be solution-oriented and engage in the constructive spirit that you've engaged in so far. Do speak slowly and concisely, and we'll try and finish paragraphs 12 bis to 14 ter in record time. Thank you very much. Now, I have colleagues requesting the floor, so I will turn to Egypt, please, microphone to Egypt.
Thank you, Mr. Co-chair. This is a text proposal on the issue of the relation with other international agreements, and I will say in dictating speed. So this mechanism is a multilateral benefit sharing for DSI under the Convention on Biological Diversity, where a specialized international access and benefit sharing instrument establishes a multilateral benefit sharing mechanism for DSI that is consistent with and does not run counter to the objectives of the Convention on Biological Diversity and the Nagoya Protocol. The CBD multilateral benefit sharing mechanism for DSI does not apply for the party or parties to the specialized instrument in respect of the specific digital sequence information covered by and for the purpose of the specialized instrument. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Egypt. I think we've captured all of that. Could you repeat it just at normal speed, just so we can check? One second, Egypt, sorry, please can we send the microphone to Egypt?
This mechanism is a multilateral benefit sharing mechanism for DSI under the CBD. Point, where a specialized international access and benefit sharing instrument establishes a multilateral benefit sharing mechanism for DSI that is consistent with and does not run counter to the objective of the Convention on Biological Diversity and the Nagoya Protocol, a CBD multilateral benefit sharing mechanism for DSI does not apply for the party or parties to the specialized instrument in respect of the specific digital sequence information covered by and for the purpose of the specialized instrument. This is to try to capture that if the DSI is used for that specific purpose, it's okay, but our instrument is the default one, so you shouldn't take the DSI if you have taken it for the purpose, for example, food and feed and agriculture do not use it for other purposes. It should fall to the default one, which is the CBD. Thank you.
Much, Egypt, and so I welcome some reflections on that, and in the meantime, I will bring in Togo. You have the floor.
Merci, Monsieur le Président. Donc, c'est hier, j'avais demandé la parole, mais comme on avait atteint l'heure, c'était sur le 14 bis, et je crois bien avant de partir, il y avait un consensus sur la reformulation que la Norvège avait proposé concernant les arrangements collectifs, qui, à mon avis, risquent de compliquer le processus. Et je crois bien que l'Union européenne, dans sa prise de parole, avait effectivement remis en cause cette proposition d'arrangement collectif plutôt que de coopération et de recherche de synergie entre les autres instruments internationaux qui traitent aussi de l'ICN. Et pour nous, la formulation proposée nous permet aussi au niveau national de rester cohérents, bien entendu, en prenant en compte le paragraphe 11 de la décision 15/9, du fait qu'il n'y a plus de conséquences si les droits et obligations existants au titre de la Convention et du protocole de Nagoya. Donc nous maintenons l'idée de privilégier la coopération et la synergie plutôt que les arrangements collectifs qui obligeraient les organes comme le Secretariat de la Convention et le Secretariat des autres instruments, donc ça risque de compliquer encore le processus. Merci, Monsieur le Président.
Thank you, Togo, and thank you for picking up seamlessly from yesterday, we appreciate that. Next on the list is Argentina.
Thank you, Co-chair, and thank you for giving us the floor again, since we already referred to some of these paragraphs yesterday. We would like to just add to what we mentioned yesterday and some of the comments that were as reaction to our intervention made, and we would like to, in this sense, refer to para 14. And we do not see that all national ABS legislation that considers or pertains or includes DSI would imply necessarily a double payment. So in that regard, I think we, at this time, support Brazil's tax proposal from yesterday to refer to measures that duplicate the share of benefits. I think this would provide foreign opportunity for, to reflect on a better harmonization of this multilateral mechanism with the existing ABS legislation at a national level that we're quite interested in considering. As we mentioned, many countries, including us, already have robust legislation on ABS that includes DSI and that are receiving, in fact, monetary and non-monetary benefits, but that does not necessarily mean in all cases duplication of those payments. So we are for the non-duplication, but also to find a way to harmonize these two elements. Thank you.
Next on the list is Uruguay. You have the floor.
Gracias, Co-chair. Sí, es un poco continuando con la discusión que empezamos ayer. Como lo veníamos planteando desde la primera intervención, nosotros queremos reafirmar acá que las legislaciones nacionales tienen que, sí, tratar de ser armonizadas o adaptadas con los mecanismos que se están planteando y discutiendo acá. No observamos que se puedan generar grandes complicaciones si trabajamos bien en las soluciones. No necesariamente visualizamos que puedan generarse problemas respecto a dobles pagos, simplemente porque las legislaciones nacionales están enfocadas a procesos como individuales para casos puntuales y básicamente no estamos trabajando con consecuencias no trazadas, digámoslo así. Acá tenemos situaciones diferentes, estamos hablando de secuencias, muchas miles de secuencias que no tienen trazabilidad, no tienen identificación, entonces no podemos decir que van a haber dobles pagos. Otro tema a considerar que cuando las secuencias son de dobles usos, es posible que se utilicen varias veces con distintos fines las mismas secuencias. Las mismas secuencias van a generar posiblemente más de un producto, en su caso, si son de interés o no. O miles de secuencias que nunca se van a utilizar en la vida. Esas secuencias no tienen trazabilidad hasta el día de hoy. Diferentes las situaciones que en general contemplan los marcos nacionales, por eso digo que podemos encontrar un camino que simplifique esta situación y que integre ambas modalidades. Gracias.
Thank you very much, Uruguay. That's very clear. Next on my list, I have Norway.
So, just to clarify regarding collective arrangement, so this is not a collective agreement, it's not a negotiation forum at all, it's an arrangement between various institutions that have competence in DSI. What we have is here is the WHO, the BBNJ, the CBD, the International Church for Plan Genetic Resources, there might be others as well, like the Commissions on Food. So this is a well-proven concept that could work. I reiterate, this is not a negotiation forum, it's a forum for exchange of information and dialogue. And we are convinced that we do need something beyond an MOU, which an MOU is between secretaries. We are convinced we need something between the conventions to make sort of a deeper integration on information exchange. And the reason is that we do relate, we're talking about all those instruments, we're talking about and relate to the same public databases and the same type of information. So we think this warrants kind of a more formal arena, and we have looked at the concepts that are already out there, and the collective arrangement is definitely attractive in that sense. But I reiterate, this is not a negotiation forum, but it will be something that needs to be formalized between the conventions. I think Japan mentioned yesterday that, and we share that worry as well, we don't want any double payments, right? But the secretaries cannot prevent double payments. The only ones that can prevent double payments is actually the conventions themselves, right? So we need something more than an MOU. We think that the collective arrangement is probably one of those models that could actually fly. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, Norway, for that very clear explanation. I don't see any more parties requesting the floor, or indeed anyone, ah, very good. India, and then the EU. India, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. I was actually waiting, since you had already mentioned India in the beginning. This is regarding the combined response to 12 bis, then 13, 14, and 14 ter. Regarding 12 bis, our view is that while the formulation is fine, we'd just like to add a few things over there. So if we include the term fair and equitable manner, so instead of saying that according to the principles of inclusivity, equity, and transparency, we could probably think in terms of adding in a fair and equitable manner, and also in accordance with the biodiversity richness of the respective parties. So that, I think, would summarize the entire intent of this 12 bis, and would also bring biodiversity into focus in the operation and management of the fund. So that is one contribution. Second is regarding the multilateral mechanism, recognizing the rights of indigenous people. We feel that the formulation is fine, but we'd like to add here that it should be based on prior and informed consent of the indigenous people and local communities, and should ensure their full and effective participation in the decision-making in accordance with the national legislation. So that we have formulated and be sharing with you through separate email on that. So these two things we'd like to add here. Regarding 14, that, you know, that's caused upon the parties to refrain from putting in place national measures, here we'd like to mention that some of the parties have their own national legislation, as has been mentioned by previous speakers. So we'd like to say that where it already exists, the point that there should be no dual payment is well taken, and that the national legislation should align itself with the intent of this para. But the framework, the existing national legislation should be allowed to continue rather than, you know, saying that they'll be debarred from the multilateral framework, that I think would not be the correct way of handling the situation. I think it's better that the national legislation should incorporate the provision of avoiding dual payments. I have a thought here, and I don't have immediate answers for that. For example, if supposing some commercial entity has already made some payment to a national government for using the, you know, that resource, genetic DSI, how does that translate for that company to work and operate in other parts of the globe? For example, they have made payment to X country, will that, how does it actually help in workout in the multilateral mechanism forum? So that part is something that we need to discuss and trash it out, so I don't have immediate answers on that. Regarding 14 bis, we'd like to just mention here that the multilateral mechanism should be implemented in cooperation and synergy with other international access and benefit sharing instruments, as has been said by other speakers. We'd just like to add here, as laid down in Article 4 of the Nagoya Protocol, and the COP decision 15/4 and 15/13 on cooperation with other conventions and international organizations, to give a complete overview of the entire thing. And regarding 14 ter, we agree that the multilateral mechanism should work under the overall supervision and guidance of the countries, the parties. Just like to add here that we are in favor of a separate fund rather than using the existing funds to ensure that there is scale, speed, and scope for utilization of the fund, and is more focused. Thank you, Co-chair.
Thank you very much indeed, India, especially for being so efficient, we appreciate that very much. I think you mentioned that you'll be sending those to us, is that, yeah, very good, then we'll go ahead, that's very helpful, thank you, India. So next, we will hear from the EU and then IPLC 1163.
Thank you, co-chairs, and good morning, colleagues. With your indulgence, I'd like to come back, I spoke already on this subject, but you encourage us to reflect on proposals made. I think that our colleague from Chile yesterday already very clearly pointed to the fact that the different mechanisms, instruments that deal with ABS and DSI are autonomous instruments that may actually make their choices in accordance with their own governance arrangements. Therefore, we're a little bit uncomfortable with the Egyptian textual proposal, which in our view infringes on the autonomy of other instruments. When you look at the way the negotiations go in WHO, in BBNJ, in the treaty, you can see that they are watching very carefully what we're doing here, and most, in most of those cases, leave the door open for a future cooperative arrangement with the multilateral mechanism. Therefore, us taking a decision on their behalf that their mechanism should not be linked to our mechanism appears going beyond our mandate in that regard. So we feel that this is not something that we can do, and we would much rather remain with a formulation that focuses on the adaptability and the sort of the cooperation of the MLM and the fund with other instruments in that regard, and we have made proposals in that regard. I think that we also understand the motivation of the Norwegian proposal for what they have now explained is not a collective arrangement, but an information forum in that regard. It sounds interesting, but we do have a question again of who would be the convener, and I think again the issue arises of hierarchy, is it for the CBD to coordinate the other instruments? And if it's not a discussion between secretaries, it's hard to imagine how one would organize a joint meeting of four or five or six different bodies to discuss that. I think that's very, very technically very difficult. I think that also we are a little bit uncomfortable with bringing the articles and provisions of the Nagoya Protocol into this possible decision. I think one of the major discussions that we had in the run-up to decision 59 was whether the Nagoya Protocol was applicable to the issue of DSI, and we actually agreed in Montreal that we would put those things aside and not try to decide on what was applicable or not and look for a pragmatic solution. And I think we should keep it that way, and therefore keep those issues out of the possible recommendation and decision, so that we can continue in the work of having a pragmatic solution in that regard. I think that therefore the issue of, related to, proposed by India, related to Article 4 of the Nagoya Protocol and decision 15/4, probably better be left outside of the decision because it has a certain potential to complicate our further discussions in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Thank you very much indeed European Union. Next we have IPLC 1163. Do identify yourself please and then NGO 1145. So 63.
Namahinoi Kyokoto. I'm speaking on behalf of the IIFB. In relation to paragraph 14 ter and generally in relation to governance of the fund, we reiterate that indigenous peoples as well as local communities embodying traditional lifestyles from the seven sociocultural regions need to have effective participation within the governance of the mechanism. They should have real decision-making power within the structure and design of the mechanism as well as in dispersment of the funds and reviews of the fund's efficacy down the track. This will assist in the fund's ability to meet the needs of indigenous peoples and of local communities according to our self-identified needs, lived realities and various capacities, as well as be in line with paragraph 46 of the reflections of the co-chairs. We believe it is critical that our participation in the decision-making should honor our roles as the most strategic partners on the ground for conservation across the world. Thank you.
IIFB 1145.
Thank you Co-Chair. Regarding governance, we take note Thank you Co-Chair. I am from Third World Network. Regarding governance, we take note of the spirit to avoid duplication. We would like to assert the view that we need, what we need is clear jurisdictional lines in terms of what DSI, from which genetic materials will be dealt under the multilateral mechanism and what will be dealt under national ABS systems or specialized instruments. We heard yesterday, I think it was Australia if I'm correct, who explained the system we are working on with the words opt-in and opt-out. We welcome this thinking in these lines. We believe our governments and indigenous people and local communities should be given the choice to opt into our multilateral system and we should maximize that choice-making capacity for them, especially to decide which of the genetic materials and which purposes they want to bring it under the multilateral mechanism and deal under other specialized instruments or national ABS systems. So in this regard, we think there can be some changes in paragraph five. Perhaps it's not the time to introduce that language. We'll wait for the time when we talk about paragraph five. Regarding 14 ter with cooperation with other international organizations, what we want to just say that it's interesting to look into these proposals which we are hearing, but we are a bit concerned because here we are more or less talking about benefit sharing, which are not obligatory in nature. Whereas, you know, in WHO and FAO, we are already having a legally binding mechanism and they're trying to work out on legally binding measures on benefit sharing. For example, in the pandemic treaty, there are green lines which use as the verb shall instead of should. So, so we might end up in some form of inconsistency. So in that regard, we think it would be nice to have these thoughts. It's, it's good, but keep in mind that we also need to improve our standards of benefit sharing in terms of legal certainty and obligatory nature. Thank you.
Thank you very much Third World Network. We'll hear from IPLC 1158 and then we'll move on. 1158 please.
Oh, I'm not an IPLC. I'm from Academia, the DSI Scientific Network. Sorry for the delayed response. I wanted to express support for Norway's intervention and to push a little bit back on the EU's although deeply experienced international diplomatic perspective. The CBD kind of is a boss when it comes to DSI. And of course, we can't boss around other UN fora. That's not good manners. But yet, if you look at recent analyses that we have put forth, CBD-sourced DSI makes up about 56% of the current public DSI databases, whereas plant treaty sourced data makes up around 10%. BBNJ comes in at 0.6% and WHO pandemic repairness in scope stuff is around 3%. And so by those numbers, indeed, you do have a scientific mandate that CBD should take leadership. And if the lawyers in the room think that the collective arrangement is a useful way to go, then we're wholeheartedly behind that. And in fact, we'd like you to go as far as you can. If you were going to invent the system from scratch, you actually would have one door where all the money went into the global fund and four windows that spit it out into the four UN fora. Because that's indeed how nature designed it in the first place, all as one collective DSI dataset. And the lines that you have to carve, of course, are come down from the political lines that we have in the sand, but yet ultimately this is one nature DSI dataset.
Much DSI Scientific Network. I see Egypt requesting the floor and then Norway. Egypt, you have the floor.
Regarding the comments that have been raised, I think we are the boss on DSI. And it is the same approach that we use for the Nagoya Protocol. So when we talk about the Nagoya Protocol, and I quote from what is written there, "The protocol is the instrument for the implementation of the access and benefit sharing provision of the convention. Where a specialized international access and benefit sharing instrument applies that is consistent and does not run counter to the objective of the convention and this protocol, this protocol shall not apply for the parties, all the parties to the specialized instrument in respect of the specific genetic resource covered by and for the purpose of the specialized instrument." You can see that we are using the same language. And this is in the article that says the relationship with other international agreement and instrument. We know our scope of work. We know our duty. We know what we are mandated to do under the CBD. And other fora also as well know their mandate. Why do we need to waste time to work with them on something that is our under mandate while they are developing their own systems? We are the default one. If you are talking of other more specialized instrument may take a part of what is covered by the, what is covered by the CBD for the specific purpose, but we are the default one. We have a responsibility. And we, I remember we have been discussing benefit sharing issue since 2007, if I remember well. And that issue of DSI, I imagined 2016. We are wasting a lot of time. And if you wait to discuss with other instrument, you will have to wait like 20 more years. And on another, on another issue, I think one of the problem with the options that we are having, option A and option B, that as they stands, I mean, they are not equal. Because option A talk mostly about project-based and using what you already have. So whether the GF or what institution that exists. While when you talk about option B, you are talking about something that is not ready. You are talking about a formula. You are talking about establishing another process that will work on that formula. I mean, they are not equal. Maybe the right way is to have interim measure right now because we are in a hurry. We want to, to have something that is workable and we don't want to wait 20 years more. So first option would be to have something that is what we already have right now, interim measure. And at the same time, launch another process to see how we improve. I don't want to wait 10 years more to work on a formula and discuss it and then what we say, let's work what, on what we have interim measure. We know that they are, they are not perfect, but let's work with them. We, we have the GF and GBBF. Okay. We acknowledge that they are not perfect and we want to, maybe we want, these are interim measures. The GF is interim measure. It has been an interim measure for, for long. Many countries are not happy. They think the process can be improved. Let's, let's have two process. One, to improve what is already have. And let's start away on what we, we already got, the GF project approach. The project approach can be improved. Because if you are, you are facing a problem that there is a lot of burden to draft the project proposal and the cycle is taking too long, maybe have like a combined, give instruction to GF that if the fund required is small, you don't have to go through the whole process like apply for, for grant or something. Have, because even under the GF, you have the full-size project, medium-size project, maybe have another category of project that is facilitated if, if the fund is not that big with less burden and more facilitate the process, more, more, more quicker, more quickly. And at the same time, let's launch another process that digs into those formula, how we improve and, but let's, let's, let's not wait until we finish the discussion to reach something that is perfect and do nothing. So perhaps let's talk about interim measure and what we can improve later. And we give clear instruction to the GF on what we already want from them. Maybe to work on the disparity between country, to facilitate the process, to, to have like a, a way to, so that you don't have to go through the cycle if you're working on a small amount of money. So work with what we have and yeah, you can establish later, right now, this working group and in close or day, let them do their work and see how we improve. Thank you.
A few short interventions on 12 bis through 14 ter. So we'll try and hold the conversation about dispersment and paragraph 12 for later, but let's focus on 12 bis, 14 ter, a few final short interventions and then we'll move on. I see Norway and then Togo. Norway, you have the floor.
Chair, I'm back to the collective arrangement. I'm thankful for the support from the scientific community. For Norway, that means a lot, that our views are backed by the scientific community. So we think we have to, of course, respect the mandates and competences of other instruments. I think Chile put that yesterday that they are autonomous. We agree on that. We are dealing with, 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 with instruments which, which have their own competences that must be respected. That's the starting point. But then the, the, the 14 bis, I believe, which is now phrased before my, my, my suggestion of collective arrangement talks about cooperation. And then the question is, well, I guess that's, that's agreeable to everyone, but then the question is, how do you want to cooperate between those instruments? So, so, so our suggestion is, is an effort to, to, to do that. And a collective arrangement would describe areas for cooperation and coordination. And that's something probably the CBD should initiate. I don't regard the CBD as a boss of anything on DSI, but as the scientific community says, there is, most of the activity relates to, to biodiversity, biodiversity data. So in a sense, it's natural for the, the, the CBD to take initiative and to explore the, the sort of, the, if there is interest for such a collective arrangement between the various instruments, that, that would be sort of the, the initial step. And if there is no interest for our collective arrangements, well, then there won't be one, you know. So, but I think regardless, if you, if you think of it as a collective arrangement or something else, the main question I have is if you want to cooperate, who should do that then? How do you want to do it? No one has tried to answer that. But we need clarity on that point. So I think what we need is, is a process to, 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 to start to, to explore how that cooperation can be formalized in a sense. And I do think that needs to be some party involvement in there because secretariats, they, they, they don't, you know, involve parties when they, they talk to each other. So, so that's not really sufficient. So this should obviously not be, be, be like a huge process or anything, but it could be a quite limited process. But there needs to be something there. Otherwise, I'm, I'm a bit concerned about how DSI will fare because we need some coordination and cooperation between the autonomous instruments. Thank you.
Very much Norway. So I'll read the list and then we will move, we'll hear from these sort of speakers and then we'll move on. This is a good discussion, but as always, we've got so much to do. So we'll hear from Togo, the EU, Cuba and then CGIAR. So we've closed the list and we'll hear from those speakers and then move on. Togo, you have the Thank you very much. Togo, I'm going to work through the list. So I'll bring in the EU and then Cuba. EU, you have the floor.
Dear Chair, and I think that we have clearly a difference of opinion here, which should be recorded. And we would like to reiterate that this is a process under the auspices of the convention and not under the auspices of the Nagoya Protocol. And the fact that there was a report to the meeting of the parties doesn't mean that this becomes a process under the auspices of the protocol. I think we had a lengthy discussion at COP15 on the implementation of Article 4.4 of the Nagoya Protocol with regard to specialized instruments, which actually again made it very clear that there was no consensus on that question. And I think it's not very helpful to import that discussion into the conversation that we're having here. With regard to both the proposals by Norway and Egypt, I think we all want the same thing. We want a multilateral mechanism that is open and adaptable so that it can accommodate the interests of other instruments that deal with DSI in the context of their provisions on access and benefit sharing. But that doesn't mean that we can take decisions on their behalf. And I think that again, we, at every COP, we have very long discussions and negotiations on the subject of synergies between on the subject of synergies between conventions. And we have very long discussion on whether we can use the word coordinate, cooperate, collaborate. I think that, again, it is not for us here to take decisions on behalf of others, but we need to work on a framework that is open and accommodating and is ready to accommodate the interests and the provisions of other instruments. Now, with regard, and therefore I think the general, the more generic formulation with regard to adaptability and cooperation is better suited to our needs. I think that we do fully support the intent of the Norwegian proposal. We're just afraid that this cannot be a small process. The way he describes it, it would be a huge process. And I think that certainly we have no opposition to the secretariats to try to work out how those instruments could work together, once the relevant decision in the respective governing bodies have been taken. And when you look at the discussions that are taking place under BBNJ, under the WHO, and in the context of the treaty, they take into account what you're doing here. I think we actually need to come up with our solution that must be flexible and adaptable, so that the others can take the necessary decisions of whether they want to avail themselves of the mechanism that we're here to set up or not. And I think that we should therefore signal openness without actually interfering with their potential decision-making that might come in time, once they know what we have been agreeing on. Thank you. Oh, sorry, just small last point on national legislation. I think, again, I feel that we're all looking for the same thing, which is that national legislation should not interfere with the operation of the multilateral mechanism. If that national legislation actually is supportive to the principle and the criteria and the operation of the multilateral mechanism is more than welcome. But clearly, the fact is that should a national legislation require benefit sharing from DSI placed on public databases, I think that's clearly something that would put that national legislation outside of the scope of our multilateral mechanism. And we will need to discuss what would be the consequences of that with regard to the eligibility for funding from the multilateral mechanism. Thank you.
Very much European Union. Next, we have Cuba and then CGIAR. Thank you.
Señor presidente, yo recuerdo que también fue una discusión similar cuando comenzamos a sentir la dimensión de transversalidad que tenía en Marco Global. Porque había, habían determinadas metas que prácticamente, en un momento determinado la negociación, intentaban asumir los mandatos de esos convenios. Fue, digamos, un elemento que fue marcando, ¿no?, la orientación de los textos que fueron teniendo determinadas metas. Pero lo que quería, donde quiero llegar es que yo creo que el convenio tiene un pensamiento de sinergia estructurado. Y hay una decisión de la conferencia de las partes que justamente la relación con otros convenios, ahí hay lenguaje claro, ahí hay procedimiento definido. Incluso ahí se delimita el cómo se va a ir trabajando cualquiera de los temas del convenio con los otros convenios que son afines. Y recordando una de las preguntas que hacía la Unión Europea, ¿quién encabezaría esto? Yo creo que está, en la propia decisión se habla del programa de Naciones Unidas para el medio ambiente como la sombría de todos y su capacidad de convocar para eso. Y si hay alguna pregunta sobre cómo eso funciona en la práctica, pudiera explicarse lo que, por ejemplo, con el proceso de Verna, que en su temporada actual, ¿no?, para hablar en lenguaje de serie, ¿no?, está justamente enfocado en el Marco Global. Entonces, cuando el programa de Naciones Unidas para el medio ambiente convocó a todos los organismos para preguntarles cómo asumir en el ámbito de su competencia el Marco Global para su implementación, yo creo que ese es el espacio del cual estamos, ese tipo de arreglo que entiendo Noruega está promoviendo. Pero yo lo que digo es que esta discusión, tener en cuenta lo que ya acordamos en esa decisión. Eso es una primera cuestión. Una segunda, yo pienso que como acuerdo para la negociación de este tema, separarlo del protocolo de Nagoya pudo haber tenido, digamos, determinada importancia. Pero para muchos países, la implementación de estas decisiones relacionadas con DSI se va a montar sobre las decisiones tomadas por el protocolo de Nagoya. O sea, no es posible que un país se pare eso en la práctica, a la hora de la implementación. Y la lectura que se hace es combinada, es complementaria, es sinérgica. O sea, por lo tanto, siempre vamos a estar respirando y siempre vamos a estar necesitando que el protocolo de Nagoya esté en las discusiones sobre el DSI porque es la manera más sensata, como lo vemos desde Cuba, de poder preparar al gobierno para asumir responsabilidad en esta dirección. Muchas gracias.
Thank you Cuba. I'll bring in CGIAR and then the secretariat, and then we'll move on. CGIAR, you have the...
We hear in some of the submissions made this morning by some of the parties and by some of the other stakeholder observers, implicitly, if not explicitly, the idea that the jurisdictional divide that currently exists between international instruments with respect to genetic resources should be extended to the DSI that's derived from or associated with those genetic resources. And that's not necessary, and it would potentially have a very negative impact on research and development. And we need to step back and think about that. And I want to give an example from our own research in the agricultural sector, where, for example, we're working on the development of new crop varieties that are resistant to particular pathogens. In that research, we used DSI from plant genetic resources that would be governed under the Plant Treaty. We also used DSI from genetic resources of pathogens that may fall under the CBD. But we enjoy access to that DSI, to all of it, on an open access basis. And it's essential that that be maintained for us to be able to do the work we do. It's essential, therefore, that we not inadvertently impose jurisdictional divides between the way that data is made available and fragment its availability. The instruments that are governing, that we're talking about are autonomous. There is no hierarchy between them. For example, under the Plant Treaty, they're also looking right now at developing mechanisms for benefit sharing related to DSI. They're similar to, but not identical, to the ones that are being considered here, and probably won't be in the end. What we need, I think, is to be working towards mutual recognition between the instruments involved, such that benefit sharing under one is recognized as allowing users to the entire global database, dataset, public dataset. And that the, so that payments under the Plant Treaty, you get access to everything, including DSI pathogens. Payments under the CBD, you get access to everything, including DSI of plant genetic resources that might be under the treaty. Thank you.
Thank you very much, CGIAR. And then the secretariat is going to pick up the answer to Togo's question.
And good morning to you all. The reflections you gave under this item, that pertains to items on the, or that are relevant to Nagoya Protocol, you will note that there will be an agenda item on DSI on the agenda for Mob 5. And in that regard, then, the report of this working group will also be then considered under that item by Mob 5. And the issues to be discussed under that item will then be emanating from what the report will say, which depends on your meeting here. I think more than that, we cannot say, as we are then in your hands regarding the outcome of your meeting here today. Thank you so much.
Secretariat, I have a long list of requests for the floor. I'm going to make myself very unpopular with you all and say, I'm afraid we have to move on. There'll be many more chances to discuss this. We have two and a half days more, so we can pick up some of these important issues over the course of this afternoon and tomorrow. But for now, I'll hand to my co-chair and we'll turn to a different part of the text. Thank you, everyone.
So much, all of you, for your constructive spirit in the discussion so far. And like my co-chair indicated, we want to get through as much of the document as possible. And so we'll move on to the paragraphs that we did not address since we started. But also, we know that some of the paragraphs, we lightly touched on them in some of the discussions we had yesterday. Yesterday, we heard, for example, interventions on the possibility of a new database under the authority of the CBD or the COP. But we also have some paragraphs that deal with databases that we have not reflected on more yesterday. So we have paragraph four, four bis, that are also speaking to the issues of databases. We would like to reflect more on those paragraphs this morning. We also have paragraph five, six, seven, and eight, which we would also want to hear your views and be able to reflect on this morning. We heard, however, some interventions to do with paragraph five, lightly touched on in the counter group one, which is linked to paragraph two, but we want to be able to get detailed reflections on that paragraph as well this morning. We encourage you now that we take the floor on these paragraphs. So four, four bis, five, six, seven, and eight. And as usual, we want to hear what are the elements that are missing on these paragraphs and how can we improve or simplify or clarify the information that is in these paragraphs? What is it that you want us to reflect in the next versions of the papers that we produce with regards to these paragraphs? So for now, we have packed the discussion on governance. I think we have collected quite diverse views and also very constructive, but we want to address those paragraphs that we have not yet addressed. And so we open the floor and hear your views on paragraphs four, four bis, five, six, seven, and eight. So the floor is open for your interventions on those paragraphs.
Madame Koetje. Well, with regard to the issue of public database, one of our concern is that the public database need to make sure that the sequence that are published there have been obtained in a legal way. We don't want somebody to take genetic resource and do sequencing and then publish information while he is not authorized to. And then the owner of the genetic resource will be facing this problem that their sequence are already on a public database. So what is missing here is that maybe some language that says that the public database are encouraged to verify that the new sequence are obtained in compliance with the legal framework of the country of origin and have received authorization from the relevant authority for publication. We don't want database to support biopiracy, amen, even unintentionally. Thank you, Madame Koetje.
Very much Egypt. I'll now give the floor to Peru, followed by Uganda. Peru.
Muchas gracias, señora presidenta. Bueno, también apoyamos la declaración que hizo Egipto. Saludamos la inclusión del párrafo cuatro bis, pero consideramos que no debería ser opcional o cuando sea posible incluir la información del origen de la secuencia digital. También es importante incluir información respecto al acceso legal a esta, al material biológico del cual se obtuvo la secuencia digital, por ejemplo, la autorización emitida o la resolución de la autoridad competente, ya que en este documento se autoriza que dicha secuencia va a ser depositada en una base de datos pública. Y eso otorga de alguna manera seguridad jurídica para el usuario. Entonces, me gustaría proponer el siguiente texto en el párrafo cuatro bis. Después, en la segunda línea, donde dice, perdón, la primera línea, entities operating public databases on DSI are encouraged to require the provision of information on the country of origin of DSI and, or information of the legal access to biological or genetic material from which the DSI is obtained. Muchas gracias, señora presidenta.
To Peru, would you please repeat the text proposed?
Entities operating public databases on DSI are encouraged to require the provision of information on the country of origin of DSI. The new text is, or information of the legal access to biological or genetic material from which the DSI is obtained.
All right, thank you very much. That is well captured. We'll now move to Uganda and then Japan. Uganda.
I will make my intervention on paragraph seven, but before that, I will want to support the submission of Egypt's on databases. Now, regarding paragraph seven, we would like to welcome the spirit for contributions to the fund. However, we note that paragraph seven in its present form is somewhat reductionist in the relationship between financial contributions to the fund and compliance with the principles of the mechanism. So we believe that benefit sharing should encompass not only the contributions, but also the other non-monetary benefits that derive from the mechanism. We note that the emphasis on contributions as indicators of compliance could easily lead to a lack of accountability and transparency in the operation of the mechanism. And it is also shrouded with a lot of ethical issues, such that entities that make financial contributions can actually ignore the moral and ethical responsibilities of participating in the mechanism and therefore bring about inequalities within the players in the mechanism. So we believe that just simply making a contribution financially should not be a warrant for being in conformity with the requirements. warrant for being in conformity with the requirements of the mechanism. So we believe that that is a welcome idea, but I think when an entity makes a contribution, it should also go far and beyond that and play along with the fair and equitable sharing of benefits and also be compliant in all other aspects, including transparency, equality, and so on. So we believe that there is need for language to be included therein. I don't have proposition now, but the way it is worded implies that once you make a contribution, this actually may even be just a one-off contribution, and then there you are, you are compliant. I think to make a mechanism that is fair to all of us and equal, we should do, while we welcome this, we should go beyond just that. Thank you.
Pan and then Caudywa.
We have some comments for paragraph four to eight. We think paragraph four is about public database, but this is not quite clear enough. We are not quite sure what kind of information entities operating public databases are to provide and the range of database to be covered because there is no definition of DSI we are sharing. For this reason, we propose some addition on the top of paragraph four, which is database and academic institutions are not expected to make monetary contribution to the global fund. That is a proposal for paragraph four. And the paragraph four B's, again, it is not quite clear, we think, because it says entities operating public databases are encouraged to require where possible provision of information on the country of origin of DSI, which seems to be contradictory with the decision fifteen slash nine, because it requires track and trace, which is not practical according to decision fifteen slash nine. For this reason, we propose the deletion of the word from require up to origin of DSI. That is our comment for four B's. For paragraph five, that is quite important. We think paragraph five is talking about incentive parties that to take administrative policy register measures to incentivize businesses. For this reason, we propose the addition of one sentence at the very end of this paragraph five, that is, each party should take appropriate measures to incentivize contribution from DSI users and relevant stakeholders to the global fund. For paragraph seven, this is also about the incentive, but I think we think this paragraph seven should be aligned with the language of the convention. And the latter half of this paragraph mentioning equitable sharing of benefits arising from the use of DSI under the CBD, but we think this part of this paragraph should be in line with the convention language. For this reason, we propose the addition of purpose of before Convention on Biological Diversity, then deletion of arising from the use of DSI. By doing this, this paragraph is aligned with the convention language. And at the end of paragraph seven, we propose the addition of one sentence, which is, all those who are willing to contribute to the global fund, both DSI users and non-users, comma, are encouraged to do so and receive certificates to prove their contribution in return, comma, to prevent free riders, full stop. We have provided this textual proposal to the Secretary of State yesterday in writing. Thank you.
Also, for your prior submission of these proposals, I think I would encourage other parties to also do the same and submit prior to making the statements if you have concrete proposals like those. So we'll now move to Caudywa and then Argentina. Caudywa.
Merci, Madame La Presidente. Je voudrais, par rapport à l'intervention d'Egypte, dire que je soutiens l'intervention de l'Égypte. Relativement au fait que, comme je l'ai dit hier, nos ressources sont prises, séquencées et mises dans les bases de données. Et donc, il convient que les entités qui opèrent justement au niveau de ces bases de données là puissent s'assurer de la légalité de pouvoir déposer et ces données séquencées. Ça, c'est ma première intervention. La deuxième pointe, le point sept, relevé par Luganda. Effectivement, on ne peut pas dire qu'on est réputé justement bon élève si on a partagé que les avantages monétaires et que les avantages non monétaires, on ne sait pas assurer que ces avantages là sont partagés. Alors, en y réfléchissant, je me suis demandé, est-ce que on ne pourrait pas, j'ai essayé de faire deux propositions, soit dans la première mention, on ajoute sharing of non-benefits, comment on appelle ça, monetary benefits? Ou bien, voilà, ou bien on dit, on ajoute, ils partagent également les bénéfices monétaires et non monétaires, au libellé qui est là. Voici la proposition que je voulais faire. Soit on met l'accent sur le seul, ou soit on met l'accent sur les deux. Merci.
Thank you, Caudywa. That was clear. We'll now move to Argentina, then Guatemala. Argentina.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I will refer to the paragraphs that you have proposed. First, regarding four and four B's, we support the inclusion of these paragraphs. In a view, the relation of the mechanism with public databases is a key one to ensure that any system works in a transparent way and does not undermine ABS legally binding instruments, especially in Agoya. It could be important to clarify regarding what are we referring when we talk about public databases? So a definition of public database may be necessary at certain point. Regarding four B's, information on the country of origin is of utmost importance for many reasons, not only ABS systems, but also conservation purposes. In a view, encourage users to declare the origin of DSI is a weak call. We would expect that the declaration of origin is the general rule. This should be a request. If establishing the origin of a particular DSI is not possible, this should be justified as an exception. We also believe that databases should contribute in ensuring that the generation of DSI following access to genetic material is compliant with applicable regulations for ABS. This is important to avoid undermining the Nagoya Protocol. Therefore, Argentina proposes an additional paragraph for databases to require the provision of the relevant certificate of compliance in the cases of DSI that was generated after accessing material genetic resources. On para five, we seem to be heading to a situation in which the whole operationalization of the mechanism relies on measures that parties will take at the national level. At the outset, we're still unsure on whether this is the right approach, and we might come back on this in the future. As it stands, the paragraph leaves too much room for interpretation. Which businesses should be encouraged or enabled? What are transnational companies that should contribute? Should parties facilitate their contribution or ensure it? In a view, this imprecise approach makes it impossible to have a harmonized system that provides clarity both to parties and to users on what they should do. In any case, if we were working making this paragraph clearer, it should be stated that the companies that should contribute are, in a view, and as we said also yesterday, large and transnational companies from developed countries with clear thresholds to establish which are those companies. Finally, given that we are negotiating a future COP decision and not a legally binding treaty, the paragraph should be amended to recognize that any measure taken will be in conformity with national legislation. On para six and para eight, I will take them both together. We think that they are quite straightforward, and we agree that these are the two ways in which payments could be done. However, to operationalize this proposal, additional considerations should be undertaken. For example, which kind of entity would be in a position to receive direct payments? We're aware that many available multilateral funds do not have that possibility. In addition, those that have it, when receiving direct payments, incur in huge transactional costs. This might undermine the very purpose of sharing monetary benefits, so we have to take that into account when designing a system for direct payments. In addition, due attention should be paid to the complex ecosystem of financial regulations that companies have to navigate in the world, basically. Making direct contributions might not entail the same permissions from one country to another. So that's also something that we should take into account. All these questions should be answered in order to be able to operationalize the fund. And finally, I will refer to para seven, which in a view is a key piece of the mechanism. Even if in principle we agree that paying into the system should suffice an obligation, we believe that some nuances should be included to avoid undermining the Nagoya Protocol and other ABS instruments. Parties may recall that nowadays, specific DSI may be subject to bilateral MTAs with specific considerations. And as we said before regarding paragraphs four and four B's, in a view, databases should contribute in ensuring that DSI that is shared follows an access to genetic material compliant with relevant ABS regulations. Therefore, in a view, paragraph seven should be amended to reflect that the payment into the system will only suffice benefit sharing obligations arising from the convention in the case of use of DSI that was shared in the public database in conformity with applicable ABS regulations. In other words, we should avoid creating a loophole that allows that DSI that was generated in violation of ABS regulation is legalized through the multilateral mechanism. Having said that, agreement from our side to include this recognition in the mechanism is subject to a final assessment of the general balance of the different elements and the negotiation. Thank you. I'm sorry for being so long.
I thank you very much, Argentina. I think specifically you said you had some proposals for paragraph four B's or four.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. On four B's, we think that the call to encourage is weak, so our suggestion would be to call it for, to change it for a request, to provide a declaration of origin. And I don't have a specific suggestion now, but we understand that there may be cases in which this is not possible, and this should be understood as an exception, not as the general rule. And we also think that there should be a request to public databases to ensure that, to require, sorry, the provision of the relevant certificate of compliance in the cases of DSI generated after accessing material genetic resources. And para seven, in a view, should be amended in order to have a ref, I mean, it should be, the reference to DSI should be, should be more specific. So our view is that it should refer, basically, that we will consider the obligation sufficed in the cases of use of DSI that was shared in the public database in conformity with applicable ABS regulations. And finally, and not to forget, though we think we will still working on para five, we think that the reference, that the measures are in conformity with national legislation should be added in para five. Thank you.
We'll now move to Guatemala and then Norway.
Creo que estamos olvidando de que las bases de datos pueden ser nuestros grandes socios en este proceso. Son ellos quienes tienen el acceso directo a los usuarios. Entonces, me parece que estas instituciones o entidades que operan las bases de datos públicas o de otras modalidades pueden también solicitar requisitos o información o metadatos a estos usuarios, por ejemplo, un identificador único del DSI que se publique con fines de seguimiento y trazabilidad. Esto ayudaría mucho en el trabajo de aquí en adelante. También estas entidades deberían requerir a los usuarios cuál sería el uso previsto que se le va a dar a alguna secuencia, con el fin de poder hacer como un sondeo en un futuro en que se piensa utilizar esta, estas secuencias, sea o no sea el uso, pero por lo menos tener un, como un sondeo. Otra cuestión que me preocupa un poco es en el párrafo seis, donde hablamos de las contribuciones al Fondo Mundial, podrán hacerse en forma directa o a través de una autoridad nacional pertinente. Yo creo que Argentina tocó el tema, como una, quién sería una autoridad nacional pertinente? En este caso, podría ser de gobierno y entraríamos otra vez en este sinfín de situaciones y problemas que tenemos el gobierno para recibir fondos. ¿Y por qué vamos a recibir fondos si todo debería de ir directamente a un fondo multilateral, a un mecanismo multilateral? De no ser así, pues no necesitaríamos crear un fondo, porque podríamos hacer acuerdos bilaterales con empresas o otras entidades para poder recibir los beneficios que se deriven de la utilización de las secuencias. Entonces, en este aspecto, propongo que se utilice una palabra más, o a través del respaldo de una autoridad nacional pertinente, o through the endorsement, o a través de entidades que operan bases de datos sobre DSI. Voy a pasar por escrito mis observaciones. Muchas gracias.
Guatemala, and we'll be looking forward to you sending those text proposals in writing. Now we'll go to Norway and then EU, followed by India. Norway.
Thank you, Madam Co-Chair. So from the outset, we were quite happy with the text as it was. I'll try to react some of the proposals made regarding the proposals from Egypt, I think supported by Uganda and Peru, on the legal check for databases. This reminds me of checkpoint language from the Nagoya Protocol. We would like to point out that information is very different from genetic resources. And this will imply tracking and tracing. And we think that databases are probably not equipped to do this. So we would not be in a position to support that language. Regarding the proposal from the Pan on certificates, we think that's an interesting idea, but we might think that a we might think that a receipt for payment might be enough. That could also work as a kind of a confirmation or a certificate. On 4B, we are a bit reluctant to this introduction. I think that there is already changes made by some of the large public databases on the country of origin, but I would please ask the scientific community to take the floor and to say more about the development on public databases, on what they actually can do in terms of information on the country of origin or DSI and so forth. Thank you very much, Madame Chair.
Thank you, Norway, and we hope in due time the scientific network would also help with their input. We'll now move to EU and then India followed by Chile.
Thank you, Madame Coche, and it's been an extremely rich and interesting conversation up to now. And if you allow, I will make comments on the totality of the paragraphs that we have under consideration here, and will sort of in the context of that also react to some of the proposals made. Paragraph 4, we actually support this encouragement to public databases. We do think and agree with Argentina that perhaps somewhere we need to state our common understanding what public databases are. I think that's a valid point. We are very reluctant to enter into the discussion on making databases a tool for monitoring and compliance verification by requiring them to ascertain the origin of the DSI. So therefore, this is something that we cannot entertain at all. I think that we are certainly aware of the fact that 159 did acknowledge the existence of the fair and care principles, but we did not in 159 endorse them or ask for them to be applied. So I think that from our side, this goes a little bit too far, and we would actually prefer to encourage operators of public databases to take into account the care and fair principles in their normal operations where applicable. I think that going forward on Paragraph 5, I think that is clearly a text that is important, and we strive as EU and member states for a text that creates strong commitments regarding implementation by parties and the undertaking of benefit-sharing by users. And I think that parties should ideally be requested to take appropriate measures at national level, and it's important that the modalities for sharing benefits are specific enough. However, I think we have a doubt with regard to the last sentence of this one, because the text of "in the case of large and transnational companies" could be understood to limit the scope of the provision to just one type of companies, notably those that are large and transnational. And we don't see any reason why large companies or companies that are substantially benefiting but are not transnational should also contribute to the fund. Obviously, we are, and we've said that already, of the opinion that all users, i.e. all companies from all countries, developed or developing, should be contributing. So we would not be able to agree with a restriction or limitation of that to developed countries. I think we strongly support the statement in Paragraph 6 that gives flexibility on how those contributions could be made, and I think it should be left to parties, to the CBD, to determine how such contributions would be made, and it's not for the CBD or the conference of the party to dictate to parties how they implement and how the contributions should be made. Paragraph 7, I think it's a key piece, and we actually agree with the spirit of making it perhaps more operational, and we like the idea of Norway, that the payment receipt, the contribution receipt, is a kind of certificate, and that would sort of make things very simple in that regard. We are skeptical towards the idea of including the issue of non-monetary benefit-sharing into the scope of Paragraph 7, not least, and we've had that discussion already, we are not sure how the multilateral mechanism could be involved in the provision of non-monetary benefit-sharing, because we wouldn't like the current, very vibrant system of non-monetary benefit-sharing that is alive between partners directly to be put into a straitjacket of an administrative system under the multilateral mechanism. I think that also Paragraph 8 is really important in that regard, that we do encourage the contribution by others. I think that from our perspective, we are a little bit worried about the different proposals that have been made, that somehow give me a very feeling of going two years back in time, because many of the proposals being made that ask for a strong role of national legislation, legality verification, access verification, make me feel that the principles and the approaches of Decision 159 are perhaps not as present with all parties in the room as they were at the time we agreed the decision in Montreal. So I think from our perspective, with a few minor tweaks, the language that we have on those paragraphs is actually quite acceptable to us. Most of the additional elements that have been put in pose a lot of problems for us, and I think may make it very difficult to remain in conformity with the criteria and principles of Decision 159. And I think we have to be very careful not to repeat many of the discussions that we had in the years running up to December 2022 in the run-up to COP16. Thank you very much.
For reminding us of what we have already agreed in Decision 15/9. And I would encourage parties to always take care of that. I think this is something we also mentioned in our opening statement, that we want so much to move forward. I'll now give the floor to India and then Egypt.
Thank you, Coche. I'll try to be brief while giving a point of view from point number 4 to 8. Regarding 4 and 4B, broadly, we are in agreement with the text. I think the intent of the Para 4 is basically to onboard the public databases on the multilateral mechanism. And while I do agree that the country of origin issues the legality aspects and the other issues regarding this have to be included in the entire framework, I feel that rather than dealing with this in bits and pieces, we can probably think in terms of a public database governance paradigm or a protocol devised by CBD or Secretariat, which, you know, sort of makes it open for the public databases to adopt or to conform to those governance framework, so that the issues regarding the countries of origin, the issue regarding legalities, et cetera, are dealt with in that framework. And there'll be other issues also as we go along. So to take care of that, I think that we can probably add here that entities operating public are encouraged to adopt or confirm to a public DSI, a public database governance framework as developed by the convention. Maybe that will help in dealing with public database in a structured fashion. Coming to point number 5, I think while we agree that we should have our own national legislation to encourage the large and transnational companies to contribute to the global fund, the issues require greater clarity on the hosting of the global fund, its governance, and then what is going to be, who is going to be the potential contributor, et cetera. And implementation of any measures by the parties at the national level would also add to the cost of collecting contributions. So when we say that we have our own framework, then there is a cost also attached to it, and how do we bear that cost? So that is also going to be one of the issues concerning point number 5. Then coming to point number 6, contribution to the global fund may be made directly or through a relevant national authority. We feel that it could be probably better, therefore, the companies operating within the national boundaries to route it through the national authority, so that the country is also aware of the contributions, though it may go to the multilateral fund. But then there are issues involved here, because there'll be transnational companies operating across different jurisdictions, the value chains, and we need to harmonize that. And how do we do that? To minimize the compliance burden, et cetera, on the businesses is a challenge that we have to actually think through. Coming to point number 7, users that make contributions to fund in line with the provisions of multilateral mechanism set out in the present decision are considered to be in conformity. So we agree that there has to be a mechanism of ensuring, a legally valid mechanism of ensuring that the contributions confirm to the provisions, and for that, we had thought of internationally recognized certificate of compliance. Maybe some other legally tenable tool can be devised under the existing provisions of the Nagoya Protocol to confirm with the requirements are related to the fair and equitable sharing of benefits from the use of DSI under the convention. So there has to be a method of asserting this contribution and ensuring that it is in conformity with the multilateral mechanism. Now, additional contributions of fund from businesses are welcome, and we do support that. However, we would like to remove any ambiguity during implementation by seeking clarification on the term voluntary contribution, and that it should not in any way be counted as a contribution under the multilateral mechanism later on. And for that also, I think a system may be devised where the voluntary contributions are categorized separately and are legally distinct from the contribution and the mechanism. And that, I would like to mention here for the sake of clarity, that the contributors may have no role in the governance and distribution of funds irrespective of the size of contribution. So that is another point we'd like to mention. Thank you very much.
Thank you, India. And just to come back to you, would you repeat your text proposal for 4B? Thank you very much. We'll now move to Chile and then Egypt followed by Switzerland. Chile.
Thank you, Madam President. In first place, I would refer to paragraph 5. In this paragraph, in our vision, there are several verbs and several actions that the countries should take in terms of administrative and legislative arrangements. In our opinion, this paragraph could be simplified and refer to primarily two actions or two verbs with respect to the actions that should or should recommend that the countries take. And these actions would be guarantee and enable. We see that there are other actions that are recommended, such as facilitate, or that in fact do not seem suitable for the type of measures that the countries expect that the actions should be adopted to facilitate that this type of contributions should be implemented. Therefore, the proposal is to use only the verbs of enable, ensure and enable. And with respect to this same paragraph, we do not see any reason to make a difference in the treatment of multinational corporations of great size. It is important to make reference to them, but not in relation to what actions the governments should take in terms of administrative processes. That is to say, the treatment of private corporations, whether they are transnational or not, with respect to the administrative processes should be the same. In that sense, the modification of paragraph 5 that we presented is to incorporate, after the text, the phrase that indicates business, pardon if I'm also speaking English, but it is to facilitate the identification of the proposal, after the word business, to add "and in particular, large and transnational companies in line with the provisions of the multilateral mechanism." And eliminate the final phrase of this paragraph to simply simplify it. With respect to paragraph 6, we have to note that this mechanism has a very particular characteristic. Unlike other funds in which the contributions come mainly from governments, that is to say, public contributions, in this case, we are talking about contributions that come mainly from private corporations, and this generates difficulties. Therefore, in our vision, it is important to give flexibility and allow that there are different processes to receive these contributions, taking into account the difficulties mentioned by the Argentinean colleague with respect to the limitations and restrictions of the international financial system. But given that we want to promote that the companies make their contributions simply and quickly, it is convenient to give flexibility and keep that they can make direct contributions or through the national entity that is relevant. With respect to paragraph 7, in line with what was indicated by the Norwegian colleague, in our opinion, it is important to make a distinction with respect to the monetary and non-monetary contributions to the fund. And in that sense, in paragraph 7, we suggest to incorporate users that make monetary contributions. Given that this paragraph is looking to implement the conformity certificate, and this conformity in our opinion should apply to those users that make monetary contributions, and not to those that make non-monetary contributions. Lastly, in relation to paragraph 8, in line with what was indicated by the Indian colleague, it is important not to generate confusion with respect to the contributions that are recommended or are considered additional to the fund, and include among those actors that could make additional contributions to the companies, because for the companies, we have a different treatment. And it is precisely the provisions and arrangements that we are discussing about the mechanism. Therefore, in paragraph 8, including the word business can generate confusion that these contributions are additional or that we base on an action, on the verb encourage, when in reality, with respect to the private businesses, we are cuando en realidad respecto de los negocios y las empresas privadas estamos creando un mecanismo en donde estamos buscando facilitar que ellas contribuyan, pero no de manera adicional al fondo sino de manera principal, y siendo ellos los actores que deben primariamente contribuir a este fondo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Chile. And I see you have made a lot of suggestions, so please do submit your text proposals for us to capture them as clearly as you have put them. So we now move to Egypt and then Switzerland, followed by Brazil. Egypt.
Thank you, Madam Coche. The issue here in point seven and point eight that you are mixing two things. First one, if you are generating benefit from using DSI or working in sectors that generate benefits, then you should pay monetary contribution to the fund. And if you do so, you are in compliance with the mechanism. This is one issue. And the other issue, if you want to make voluntary additional contribution, you are more than welcome. And we shouldn't mix. I mean, to say that you are in compliance with something, it means that you have to, you have an obligation, and you comply with that obligation. And the language does not reflect that. What I am proposing here is a new seven bis that reads as follows, and I will say in dictating speed. User who slash user in sector that benefited from the use of digital sequence information, which has been legally generated and published in public database, are required to make mandatory monetary contribution to the fund. Point, by doing so, in accordance with the provision of the multilateral mechanism set out in the present decision, they are considered to be in compliance with the requirements for the share and equitable sharing of benefit arising from the use of DSI under the Convention on Biological Diversity. And you will see that the flow normally, because in eight you are talking about additional, and they are not both relevant. We don't want to give the impression if you are putting additional contribution that you may put contributions that is not fully in compliance with what you are required to pay less, and you want to be having that badge of being compliant, cannot happen. So compliance means that you have a mandate and you fulfill that mandate. With regard to point nine, if I may, to add by the end of the text, to address the disparities between developed and developing countries, sorry, parties, sorry, parties, parties not countries, and developing parties, by prioritizing support for capacity building, technology transfer, and access to financial resources to enhance the participation of developing parties in the global DSI framework. Some additional point in eleven.
Sorry, Egypt. Like indicated, we just want to focus on four to eight, so I think you have a chance to do that.
Thank you.
And also, please do submit your text proposals to the secretariat.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll move to Switzerland, and then Brazil and UK. Switzerland.
So first regarding four and four bis, so we think paragraph four is really a very important paragraph because database holders are key stakeholders in this process, and therefore, it's of course important that they are involved and also their expertise and practical knowledge will be taken into account. And so as far as those public databases also operate on open access policies for data to all users, they should even be considered as a part of the multilateral benefit sharing mechanism. And so, that being said, the role of these stakeholders is of course very important, but since we are here talking about benefit sharing from the use of DSI based on a COP decision, we should not have wording here that points towards requirements for users of DSI, but this should be replaced in the second line by possibilities and procedures for DSI, so that databases can support benefit sharing in this regard. But of course, at the same time, there must also be some incentives for database holders to support and facilitate the implementation of the multilateral mechanism. Regarding four bis, here we don't support the addition with the reference to the requirement of having information on country of origin in this context of benefit sharing. And also, we are concerned about the proposal from Egypt regarding the legal aspects, which points towards like legal compliance checking in relation to these databases, and also tracking and tracing, which we do not support. Regarding paragraph five, this is of course a very central paragraph of the whole multilateral mechanism, and we support that parties take measures to encourage and enable users to contribute to the fund. And but here again, we are dealing with a COP decision, and so we would see, we would like to see the wording change towards parties are invited to take administrative policy or legislative measures and so on. And also in the last part of the of this paragraph, we would delete the word ensure. But that being said, as I've also pointed out earlier, this also means that we need very strong incentives for parties to contribute to the multilateral mechanism and to the fund. And regarding paragraph five, we would therefore also support the proposal by Japan, which says that the parties should also take measures to incentivize users. Then also strongly linked to the incentivization or to incentives is paragraph seven, which is also major, a paragraph of major importance, because this could lead to legal certainty, which actually would represent a major incentive for users to contribute to the fund. And also here, we are of the opinion that it must be made very clear that users that contribute to the fund according to the provisions that we are deciding or agreeing upon in this decision, they should be exempt from any other national benefit sharing obligations from the use of DSI. And this would also then help as an incentive to avoid double payments. And here we also had a proposal, but I think it is very well in line with the proposed, the proposal by Japan regarding the certificates, which we fully support. Thank you very much.
We now move to Brazil and then United Kingdom. Brazil.
Thank you, madam. Argentina made some quiet, detailed, and substantive comments which anticipated many of our comments, so we're happy to endorse them. I would just like to make a general comment, reiterating the comment that I made yesterday, and some concerning comments that were made today in relation to the nature of the actions that we are invested in this document. I won't delve into specifics. I won't start another verb discussion here, but just like to draw attention that again, there is a very clear political commitment that the benefits derived from the use of DSI should be shared, and that this political will, this political decision shall be respected in this spirit and the form and content of the text that we are discussing here. So we reserve our rights, since nothing is agreed to, always agreed to, work in specific languages to ensure that this political commitment is respected. Again, I think this is not the right time to start discussing verbs in here, but it is worrying, it is concerning, that some parties still raising questions apparently concerning the clear political decision that was taken in COP fifteen. Now, on paragraph four bis, I think there is one element that is missing, and that element has a direct connection to paragraph thirteen, which concerns the rights of indigenous peoples or local communities, which is, it's an important subject that so far we haven't tackled in adequate way. This is a very complex, one of the many complex issues at hand, and we need adequate time and room to deal with that. Because as it stands, it's just a general call, and we do not see specific measures to ensure that the rights of indigenous peoples and local communities are respected in specific parts of the text. I'm making that comment because our suggestion will be to add not only an encouragement to require the provisional information, the country of origin, but also an encouragement to require the provisional information on associated traditional knowledge where applicable. Of course, we know that this won't be applicable in all cases, but currently, there are no such encouragement or requirement as far as we know. And I think that will be very useful, we will make a difference if we have a clear political message saying that we appreciate receiving more detailed information on associated traditional knowledge when applicable. Again, we are fully aware that this might not be applicable to many cases, but in some cases, yes, and currently, we do not have that. We have had lengthy discussions on the information on country of origin, but we haven't had the same amount of discussion concerning information on traditional knowledge, and how would that, how would that fit into the mechanism that we are developing? So that's one element that we think is missing. On paragraph seven, I think there should be clear, I think some other delegations made comment that regard that the conformity referred to, it's referred to specific usages or specific activities, you don't have a lifetime conformity certificate that provides that once you have done X, then you are in compliance for perpetuity with the, with the multilateral mechanisms. So we would need to take that into consideration, to find some language that addresses, I think, this concern, which it's a reasonable concern. Now, on paragraph eight, I would like to echo what many delegations have mentioned, particularly India, Chile, and Egypt, and say that we should be very cautious not to send a wrong political message in that regard. I think it would be beneficial to every one of us in this room if we have a clear and general understanding that we are not dealing with ODA, this will not be an ODA fund, this is something else, and we shouldn't mix the two things together. So we are concerned that if we put, as parties before me have mentioned, that if you mix both things, that you might send the wrong political messages. So any contributions for philanthropic organizations or governments should be complementary, subsidiary, they should not at any place be considered like the main source of resources. They should not in any way replace the main obligations to share benefits, we would be fulfilled by the private sector. And that should be clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Brazil. We move now to the, to United Kingdom and then United Arab Emirates.
Thank you, Madam Co-chair. The UK was relatively content with the original paragraphs, but we do have some comments to share and reflections on what's already been said this morning. We think paragraph four is very helpful. It wouldn't require the databases to take any role in ensuring benefit sharing happens, but it would be a means to point users in the right direction of how to, how to share benefits, and importantly, raise awareness of the requirement to do so. On four bis, like Norway, we'd really welcome some input from database representatives, if they're here, or perhaps users who are uploading data onto the databases, to confirm whether those uploading DSI are required to provide information, for example, on where the genetic resources on which the DSI was generated has come from. As Argentina said in that regard, this is, this is important for scientific best practice. On paragraph five, we think that the measures should be taken by all parties and should apply to businesses in all countries. That's an important point for us. On paragraph six, we agree with the EU and think that it's helpful and it's important to retain the flexibility there. On paragraph seven, we agree both with Norway and Japan that certificates or receipts are helpful to provide evidence that users are paying into the fund, but what we don't want is to have some kind of administratively heavy process to do that. So perhaps some simple automatic receipting system online could be quite effective. Also, on paragraph seven, Chile suggested adding monetary contributions into that paragraph. I mean, I think we can support that, but it's probably implicit in that the contributions referred to there to the global fund rather than to the broader mechanism. And on paragraph eight, just a final point, I fully understand Chile's suggestion to remove the reference to business there, but I do think perhaps we should retain it, actually. The reference to business there recognizes that not all businesses are users of DSI, and therefore, the other part of the mechanism wouldn't be applying. But if other businesses wished to contribute, then they would feel encouraged to do so in that paragraph. Thank you, Madam Co-chair.
United Kingdom. We'll move to United Arab Emirates and then Canada. United Kingdom, we'll move to United Arab Emirates and then Canada. Too fast, but I think the interpreter was even faster, so it worked well. Now we'll go to Canada and then Cuba.
Thank you, Co-Chair. Although we would be happy to have confirmation from delegates here from the scientific community, we do feel some comfort with paragraph four on encouraging databases to require information on country of origin. It's our understanding that the INSDC, that, you know, the major base infrastructure for this ecosystem of databases, is already doing this for a major subset of data. We also disagree with the idea that having rich metadata in databases necessarily means track and trace. We know that the World Data System, which is part of the International Science Council, among others, are looking at the role of standards and certifications, and there are indeed good repositories with quality data associated with those standards. And we're seeing the development of the local contexts, biocultural labeling initiatives, GBIV also asks for data to be fair, but they can't force the issue. I guess my point here is that these movements aren't static, they're taking on fair and care and trust principles and putting them into practice, and the scientific communities are asking for more and varied services, but this can't be forced by the CBD. So we want to create a sort of enabling environment for those good things to go forward, but we can't force this. We do support Japan's addition to the end of paragraph four about not expecting databases to make monetary contributions themselves. On four bis, I think others have already addressed this, but the issue we see is that users have simply no idea of the background for most DSI, and we don't know how that work would be done on trying to work out what the legal background is, or who would do the work. So it'd be extremely resource intensive, and then we get into track and trace, as others have made the point. We consider this is, you know, likely to continue with the amount of new data pouring in that are derived from new approaches, such as EDNA, there's just a vast amount of information that's flowing, we should be making the most of it rather than trying to pin it right down. Does it mean that if companies can't prove that they're accessing DSI that was legally obtained under national legislation, and let's bear in mind these data are accessed by the thousands and more, that they have no incentive then to pay in because they'll get no guarantee that they've complied? So I'm just not sure how fussy we want to be about the money that's coming in, because we're trying to gather more money, not less, in order to fund conservation and sustainable use. On paragraph five, we do need to keep that flexibility at national level, given our very different circumstances, and to note, we strongly consider that this should be applying to users in all countries, and we support proposals that center on incentives. In a non-binding decision, we consider the appropriate verb here as a should, not are to, and we support Switzerland's proposal in that regard. On incentives, as we've previously said, we regard this as a critical means of mobilizing payments and raising awareness as well, and we support Japan's addition to paragraph five, and we're open to a certificate, as Japan suggested in paragraph seven, or as Norway suggested, a receipt of payment. While we don't see the need to have such payment receipts for non-monetary benefits, we agree with the EU, we don't want to mess around too much with the rich relationships that happen at bilateral level, we are still in favor of creating opportunities for sharing information on what non-monetary benefit sharing is going on, whether that's by the clearinghouse or some other platform. On paragraph eight, just listening to the UK just now, we appreciate their intervention and could suggest something like additional contributions to the global fund from other individuals, businesses, nonprofit, or philanthropic organizations and governments are encouraged to make the point that, you know, the main focus is on businesses that are using DSI, but there are other businesses who might want to make a contribution as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Canada. Please do submit your texts, your proposals in writing. We'll now go to Cuba and then Australia.
Muchas gracias, Co-President. Me voy a referir a tres elementos, ¿no? Primero, tiene que ver con un poco la arquitectura institucional de lo que estamos aspirando, porque el convenio se relaciona con las partes, y entonces aquí en el párrafo cuatro, nosotros le estamos pidiendo a las entidades que operan las bases de datos públicas a que asuman determinadas responsabilidades. Yo creo que en párrafo cinco, en la manera que está planteado, partes deben tomar medidas administrativas con un propósito determinado. ¿Qué quiero decir? Que algo falta en el párrafo cuatro, cuatro bis, para poder recibir de las bases de datos públicas esas responsabilidades que las partes están acordando que deben tener, porque no lo veo claro de que nosotros como convenio le debemos estar diciendo a esas entidades públicas, de las bases de datos públicas, que hagan determinadas actividades. Aquí queda un asunto colateral, paralelo, que son aquellas bases de datos que no están en los países sino que están vinculadas a organismos internacionales, y volvemos a recordar lo que se había hablado hace un rato sobre la relación con otros organismos. O sea, el asunto de ahí es, ¿de qué manera vamos a intentar a que se cumpla, a través de quién, en la manera que el convenio trabaja habitualmente? Eso es una primera cuestión. Lo segundo, en relación con el cuatro y el cuatro bis, cuando uno lee ambas opciones en relación con la decisión quince barra nueve, uno puede concluir que el cuatro bis se ajusta mucho más, porque ambos elementos que están ahí, lo que tiene que ver con la referencia de origen y los principios fair y care, están en los párrafos preambulares de la decisión. Quiere decir que con esta nueva decisión, nosotros lo que estaríamos indicando en la parte resolutoria, la conveniencia de favorecer su uso de una mejor manera. Ahí una cuestión menor es utilizar el mismo término, porque aquí dice information on the country of origin, hay que ver la manera que quedó en la decisión quince, o sea, para mantener el mismo lenguaje. Y con esto, por supuesto, estoy diciendo que el cuatro bis, insisto, refleja mucho mejor la decisión quince nueve. En cuanto al párrafo cinco, yo pienso que, igual que en todo el texto, el lenguaje debe ser un poco más, yo diría, no combinatorio, porque eso no es lo correcto, pero un poco más claro, más preciso. Hay una frase famosa en Cuba, ¿no?, de que lo que más comienza más termina, ¿no? Entonces, yo pienso que primero, como decía Chile, definitivamente el verbo to facilitate no es un buen comienzo. ¿No? Entonces, la idea que está al final pudiera ubicarse en la segunda línea del párrafo cinco, dice unable business, coma, in particular to ensure the contribution for large and transnational company, coma, to contribute to the global fund, and so on. En cuanto al párrafo siete, reflexionando un poco sobre la sugerencia de Chile, que yo había leído en todo momento de que se trataba de financial or monetary contribution, y puede tenerle razón de la necesidad de aclarar, pero eso nos lleva a punto de que no hay en otra parte de la decisión algo que aluda a las non-monetary contribution to the global fund by different users. O sea, tal vez requerimos el usuario, o pudiéramos tener la opción de que eso sea asumido por la junta una vez esté en funcionamiento. Yo preferiría no acotar contribuciones y dejarlo en términos generales, porque tendríamos la obligación de entonces crear un párrafo sobre non-monetary contribution to the global fund. Gracias.
We'll now go to Australia and then Cote d'Ivoire.
Thank you, Madam Co-Chair. Australia, like Norway, the UK and EU was pretty okay with the text as it was drafted, and I've been doing my very best to follow everyone's additions, so forgive me if my thoughts are a little bit muddled. So on paragraph four bis, and this sort of flows throughout, the tracking and tracing of country of origin information is going to be particularly onerous on the entities operating public databases, and this goes to the question of checking against national legislation as well. I don't know that we, as the CBD, have the authority to ask these entities to track the origin of digital sequence information, or whether that was legally obtained under national ABS legislations, because that would be every party to the CBD, every piece of national legislation, and in my case and many others, sub-national legislation as well. And I just don't think that that could be possible for those entities, and I think, I can't recall who said it, but it's really not the responsibility of the CBD to sort of, I think, you know, we're a boss, like we've been talking about in many things, biodiversity styles, but in terms of, you know, instructing these entities, which are private organizations, to do things, I'm not sure that the CBD has the authority to do that. We can certainly encourage them and incentivize them, and I think that's the key point here that I've heard from many speakers, is that the key is to incentivize and encourage these entities, we can't instruct them or mandate them to do it, and so, I don't know if these businesses could be like my children, if I instruct them to do something, they do the exact opposite, and I don't want to see that happen here. So I think that we need to go forward, as the co-chair has indicated and others have indicated, not have all of these conversations which convolute and complicate something that we really want to just incentivize, and, you know, and at a national level, we have that responsibility in paragraph five, to encourage our businesses and the international business that exists in our countries to really understand that this multilateral mechanism is a way for them to be contributing to biodiversity conservation in a really meaningful and true way. And I think there's something in the certificate of compliance proposed by others in the room, you know, but it has to be a simple certificate of compliance to DSI, and I think uploading existing, existing genetic resource certificates of compliance is really difficult, especially for those countries that don't necessarily have the Nagoya Protocol ratified. And so something simple that says to a business, an entity, or an organization, that you got the tick of approval from the parties of the CBD, stamp, you're done, this is great. And, you know, I think we're complicating the issue here, where we want to get as much funding into this as possible, and the more we restrict it, or the more we enforce difficult aspects of administrative burden, that usually tends to put people off. I think also, I agree with the contributor from Chile to simplify the language in paragraph five, and that goes to, you know, in particular, large and transnational companies, and we do want to target those big businesses where we can, as best we can. And I think we don't want to restrict additional contributions for social license operation for business and industry, so I agree with the UK in that we would like to keep the other businesses that don't necessarily use DSI in there as potential contributors. I think that's all, it's, I can't wait to see the text, because it's all very much changed from what the original document is, so I think I'll just leave it there. Thank you, Chair.
A few more parties, but I think if we focus, then we will make good time before the end of the meeting, so let's hear from Cote d'Ivoire, excuse me, and then Norway. Cote d'Ivoire. Thank you very much, Cote d'Ivoire. In brief as well, which is good, that will help us, so let's hear from Norway and then Colombia. Norway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very quickly, regarding, I think it was Egypt that had a proposal on compliance language. In my view, that's treaty language, and we should avoid using that, and I think Australia gave a good explanation why we should refrain from using such language, that was my first point. The second point is regarding eight. I do think we should encourage contributions from businesses that are not users, so if the magnificent seven would like to contribute to the fund, those are the biggest companies in the world, and we should definitely be open to that. If governments would like to make contributions, we should definitely be open to that, it's about getting as much means as possible into the fund. Mindful, as Brazil said, that this is not an ODA fund, it is indeed a benefit-sharing fund. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For a moment, I thought you were referring to the seven people on the podium. So next, I think it's seven, we'll hear from Colombia and then Togo. Colombia.
Gracias, señor co-presidente. Para Colombia, y en línea con lo mencionado por Uruguay, Brasil, y Argentina, es importante la armonización de la legislación nacional y el mecanismo multilateral, por lo que apoyaríamos la redacción que evite la duplicación de pagos. De igual manera, consideramos que no se debe limitar a las partes para desarrollar legislación nacional que busque implementar el mecanismo multilateral o determinar otras disposiciones sobre el acceso a DSI. Consideramos también que la información sobre el país de origen es de gran importancia, por lo que, con relación al párrafo cuatro bis, apoyamos la modificación de cambiar la palabra en courage por requested, por lo que proponemos esta redacción. Entities operating public databases on DSI are requested to require, where possible, the provision of information on the country. On the region country. Con respecto al párrafo cinco, consideramos que se deberá requerir o garantizar, como lo propone Chile, no alentar a las partes para garantizar que las empresas cumplan con sus obligaciones de contribución. Expresamos también la importancia de mantener las obligaciones diferenciadas, como se ha hecho referencia, y estas obligaciones deben ser explícitas sobre los contribuyentes al fondo. Este consideramos es un tema de crucial relevancia. Sobre el párrafo ocho, apoyamos las intervenciones de Chile, Brasil, y otros sobre la necesidad de evitar señales o acciones que den la sensación de que este fondo es para recibir recursos de cooperación o ayuda al desarrollo. Y en línea con lo mencionado por Brasil, Colombia considera que es importante hacer referencia o agradecer las contribuciones. refer to or acknowledge the contributions of indigenous peoples and their traditional knowledge. And we consider that paragraph 13 requires discussion and revision. And with regard to this, Colombia also wanted to include the issue of Afro-descendants as part of the communities whose traditional knowledge is respected. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good. So I'll close our list so that we can get through everyone in good time. And I want to move beyond parties as well. So I'm encouraging everybody to be brief as we move towards our lunch break. Let's hear from Togo and then Jordan. Togo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I see that points four, five, until eight maintain a lot of attention among parties, but I don't know if I can intervene on paragraph 10, on paragraph 10.
About paragraphs four through eight. Thanks. Thanks for your understanding, Togo. We'll go next to Jordan and then the Republic of Korea. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am supporting what is proposed by the French government. I am certain that it is necessary to establish the agreements of the legislative and legislative law, including a clear statute that governs the use of the rules of the international law with our consent. And in what is included in paragraph five, I am certain of the assurance that it is necessary to provide assistance to the foreigners in the application of the political and administrative measures that are registered with the global rule. Mr. President, in paragraph seven, it is requested that more documentation and some measures are taken, including the agreement. As a reference to the companies that are using a language that is used to share the products that are approved or similar. However, in what is included in paragraph eight, I see that such natural use of language is not accounted for, including the agreement. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very clear. Thank you, Jordan. Next, we'll hear from the Republic of Korea and then Uruguay. Korea, you have the floor.
Thank you, Co-Chair. Regarding paragraph five, we agree that Japan and Switzerland's comments that providing incentives for fund contributors are important. It is very important to provide incentives to motivate DSI users and DSI generators. However, I think that measures to encourage and enable businesses to contribute in paragraph five can be understood as already including the provision of incentives. So further consideration is needed to revise the wording for separate incentives. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Korea. Let's hear from Uruguay. And then I see some parties who've requested the floor coming back. I think that's fine, but I do have a long list of others. I think I'd like to hear from the IPLCs first and then the parties who are coming back, if you'll let me do that. So I'll go to Uruguay first and then IPLC 1163. So Uruguay, you have.
Thank you, Co-Chair. I wanted to focus a little on paragraph four and redenote a little the information when we are talking about data bases. I don't have a clear role of the data base. But what we know is that the role of the data base is to offer, to manage, is the reservoir of the information that today and all this week has been covering up the discussions. So I share that it is a strategic factor and that we have to talk with them, with the investigators, with the people who feed the data base. The data base has two functions. One is to receive the information. At the moment that the data base is deposited, it is not only the data that is deposited. It is deposited not only the data, but a lot of information that is super useful for users. This includes identification, which could be a unique identification, which is visible, each of them has their own method of doing it, but also data of origin, of species, obviously. If you don't know the origin, the species, the data would not have value in itself. So there is a lot of information that is there and that the data base transfers it when it is transferred by the investigator, when it is transferred by the developer. Then is the user, the one who uses it. There is where we have to see to what extent we can reach, to what extent we can converse with these institutions, with this data base, what role they could play in bringing the information beyond the user. What type of user, who used it, at what moment, from where, the identification of the user. But it is two different things. How is the information uploaded and how is the information of the passport deposited, and who uses it, and where does it go, and when does it end? That is on one side. On point five in particular, a little support for the arguments of Argentina, establishing who are the companies clearly, and adding that any measure should be in accordance with the national legislation. That is for paragraph five. For paragraph six, we are okay with the proposal that there are two options, as is suggested, so that each state can define, based on its possibilities, which way is the most appropriate. Some states have more convenience in generating this type of instruments than others, and it should be considered as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Uruguay. Let's hear from IPLC 1163 and then NGO 1147.
Thank you, Chair. In relation to four bis, we appreciate the position of Brazil for the consideration of associated traditional knowledge. Similarly, we suggest that the current status quo in relation to data governance must shift. We advocate for data governance, including alignment with fair and care principles, as referenced in 15-9 and adopted by EPES. It is essential to create conditions of trust. For the protection of the rights and interests of indigenous peoples and of local communities embodying traditional lifestyles in relation to their traditional knowledge, we are requesting that databases are encouraged to provide enhanced provenance information related to indigenous data and metadata, including lands, territories and waters of origin, considering differences in national and local context and needs. Thank you.
Right? Yeah, great. Then we will hear from NGO 1147 and then IPLC 1158. So 1147.
On somebody somewhere does need to monitor whether biopiracy is happening or not. And if public databases aren't even equipped to ask whether genetic material, genetic resources or DSI have been obtained legally, then we do need to find another place to do that. And in that respect, I think the CBD does seem to be the best international instrument to do this, for example, in a clearinghouse. And just another comment on paragraph four, where it says, "Databases are encouraged to make information about the multilateral mechanism available," that's really, really vague. So basically, somewhere in the web interface of the database can be linked to the terms and conditions. And then on page five, it can simply say, "The CBD has a multilateral mechanism, and as a user of DSI, you might be required to share benefits." Full stop. That would fulfill paragraph four at the moment. And it doesn't really help anybody further, because where would the user even find such information? So at least as a CBD, we should proactively then provide wording and a link where to find such information. And if the CBD would be establishing a DSI clearinghouse, then that would be very easy to simply link to that website, and then the users could be really sure that they a) know how does the multilateral mechanism work, what do I need to do, do I need to do anything? And more importantly, they could also know whether the DSI that they're using has been legally obtained and that they're not unknowingly participating in biopiracy. Thank you.
Very much. Europa. Next, we'll have IPLC 1158 and then NGO 1145. So 1158.
This is academia again here, sitting accidentally with the wrong sign, but yet not. So upon request from colleagues to understand more about the technical submission process of DSI to public databases, and also with support from Norway to the informal process and the production of new knowledge products to inform parties, they commissioned a DSI database landscape product, which will be available. But just to briefly get everybody up to speed. So depositing into DSI databases is very well documented, so users must submit their country of origin, that's been mandatory since May of 2023. They also need to tell the world where they are, what they're located, and all sorts of additional scientific information has already been confirmed by other parties. Data depositors also do need to certify that they have followed all appropriate laws, as well as additional ethical principles and scientific integrity practices. And as those database heads that are part of the scientific network pointed out, the number of submissions made by researchers to the repositories constantly increases. We are in this era of exponential data growth. And on average, there are thousands of new submissions every week to just the INSDC databases alone. And the size of these submissions can vary a lot, from a few sequences to very large submissions that themselves are tens or hundreds of thousands in just a single submission. Another important aspect for the user community is that Nogoia Protocol compliance is not just as simple as checking in with the competent national authority and saying, "Oh, there's your legislation, does it match or not?" Because national legislation changes over time, and it's highly dependent upon taxonomic groups, is the organism endemic or not, the kinds of research activities that were undertaken, when and where the samples were collected, was it in a national park or not? So it's not even just, as Australia pointed out, as simple as saying, you know, one country's legislation, yes or no, there's a vast degree of complexity underneath that. And so if you cross-check that with the thousands by the thousands, it really becomes a sort of monumental task. Now, if parties are hungry to take new action and to encourage scientific transparency and accountability, then our network has put forward some new ideas where there's room for improvement. So we do believe there is a need to improve provenance information on whether, for example, the DSI arose from genetic resources that came from within IPLC territories. This is a very underdeveloped area, and there's much room and need for parties to call for that provenance information to become clearer. We've also noted in a past brief that databases outside of the INSDC, such as protein and large metabolite databases, basically have zero information on country of origin. So there's certainly a room for improvement outside of DNA sequence databases. And in general, as we had the conversation yesterday, that databases can continue to work for maximum interlinkages, especially under GULC and TARGET 13, to help us understand non-monetary benefit sharing. And just as a final friendly note for all colleagues, Dr. Yiming Bao, who runs the Chinese National Database, is here, and he also worked extensively at GenBank, another INSDC member. So if you have questions on databases, he's here, as well as Dr. Adriana Radulovichi, who is the executive director of the International Bar Code of Life, another large database outside of INSDC that requires country of origin information. So lots of available expertise.
Yeah, that's great. NGO 1145, please.
The co-chair, the constant argument of some parties and certain stakeholders is that any form of governance, for that matter, even a user identification and registration, is considered as a hindrance to research and innovation. But what is forgotten is the scientific community is a broad church, and not all of them agree with the views we heard in this room a few minutes ago, and not all of them are represented inside this room. So allow me to quote from an open letter signed by 290 scientists, written to WHO on the occasion of negotiating the pandemic treaty three to four months ago. The letter reads, "The WHO could also establish its own repository or clearinghouse for genetic sequence data and samples, which would potentially provide scientists with more transparent management of these resources and the guarantee of continued access." An author of this particular letter explained to us, "The governance of sequence data should be transparent, accountable and supportive of both science and equity." That means ensuring open science and clarity around acknowledgements, research collaborations, and how benefits of any of the products developed from sequence data are to be shared. Whether databases are able to do this role, for example, verifying the legal framework and validity, I think some of the countries have asked clarification from the scientific community. Here is a view from a scientist outside the room. Another scientist who wrote this particular letter has written an opinion piece a few days ago. He writes, "Ensuring the ABS principles are respected and is not about restraining access to data, but about keeping a record of access for accountability purposes. It's worth considering this as an engineering problem." In fact, most open databases already operate the most bare-bones solutions required for building proper ABS support. They keep logs. The administrators of any web service can see who downloaded what resource at what time. If this information includes an unique identifier, then the raw material required for ABS already exists. Scientific community in BBNJ has already undertaken that. Plan treaty attaches DOI to the general class of information sets. There are databases who already have options to upload permits, and if you use machine readable permits, the problem of so-called complex verification can be resolved. Now, requiring authentication or user registration, others say, does not preclude automated scripted access to data, and therefore does not stand in way of scientific progress. Canada asked whether, you know, can we force these databases, which are outside the CBD framework? This is where the Egyptian proposal gained importance. What we need is databases with legal mandate at the national levels or the CBD level to clear off or flag off the public release of the data. And then all other databases can come into contact with these databases with a legal mandate and share or mirror the data after accepting certain basic terms and conditions to respect this decision. Australia has also been very keen about that we may not be able to work with, very keen about respecting IPLC's rights. And it is one of the most important ways to respect IPLC's ideas. We just heard from scientific community that provenance data needs to be recorded. So we welcome this positive and constructive spirit from the delegations like Australia, EU and UK to show further possibilities, to explore further possibilities and look forward for ensuring digital justice to the people across the world. I just quote from the Regulation of EU from 2018 on the Framework for Free Flow of Non-Personal Data in the European Union. It says, "Regulation shall not affect powers of competent authorities to request or obtain access to data for the performance of their official duties in accordance with union or national law. Access to data by competent authorities may not be refused on the basis that data are processed in another member state." So we are expecting some kind of such rights to the developing countries from across the part of the world, to the countries who are sponsoring and managing, hosting the existing DSI databases, you know, other countries. You know, the EU law even go forward and provides a right for certain competent authorities to visit the databases and inspect the data storage equipment in person. So this is where we come from, these proposals, and we fully back the proposals to create a CBD database. One additional request here is to consider... consider this database to provide as an additional facility to countries that lack capacities to manage their own database for their own national ABS purposes. Otherwise, we are talking about dealing with countries having disparity, treating unequal parties equally and which would cause a lot of inequities. So with this request, I conclude. Thank you, Co-Chairs, for the time.
Third World Network, I do see other requests for the floor, but we're just going to, I beg parties' indulgence. I don't think we have time to hear from everybody. I'm sorry. I hope that you feel that we've had a good discussion and there will be opportunities to go into this further later this week. We're just going to confer on the podium for one minute and then we'll let you know about next steps. Thank you very much.